Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall tonight. And for those of you here, we welcome you and those of you at home. We will begin our City of Fairview Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, March 20th, 2025, at 7:11 PM. Ms. Jones, please call the roll.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
I'm number three, is prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for helping us get through the storms and just being with all of our citizens and providing us with a great group that we will honor tonight to that comes in every time we have needs and storms and just gives many of their hours to clean up. And we just appreciate them so much. I appreciate all of our citizens, those here, those watching, and everyone in our community. I just pray blessings over each one of them for health and prosperity. I pray that you will guide and direct each one of our board members up here tonight, that we make the best decisions for our city. I thank you for our staff and their hard work and everything they do to help us to be successful and to take care of our citizens. I pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm number four, is mayor's comments. I just, again, welcome everyone here tonight. And those at home, we are so glad that you've tuned in to be a part of this meeting. And I appreciate our officers here tonight. And just thank you for being here. And if, you know, let's just make sure we're all courteous and polite if, you know, we are speaking tonight. And with that, we will get started with item number five, approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
I'm number seven, is public announcements, award. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed citizens' comments. Do we have any tonight?
Yes, Mayor, one tonight. Ms. Leslie Street?
Yes, thank you.
I am Leslie Street at 1062 Highway 96 North. Good evening. I am here to provide a few facts and questions regarding items C and D under new business. I hope that you will consider the issues that arose on neighboring properties due to the Orange Shire subdivision directly beside the Woodwick subdivision. Did Cove's and/or the engineer contact TDEC to get a copy of inspections on the Orange Shire subdivision? Will there be documented inspections for the Woodwick subdivision? And will the results be provided to neighboring property owners? The Woodwick subdivision runoff will flow directly onto the neighboring farm. As stated in communications with city officials, how much will the sediment issues be handled how will the sediment issues be handled differently than they were for Orange Shire? Will the issues that can arise be handled in a timely manner to avoid runoff onto the neighboring farm? Will the silt fences be inspected and cleared accordingly to prevent future sediment runoff? This was not done for Orange Shire, and city officials were provided pictures and videos. There were two heavy rains that created sediment runoff before anyone cleaned out the silt fences. This was not done in a timely, safe this was not done in a safe timeframe for the neighboring farm. Remember the fact that there are still issues with the Orange Shire subdivision, and now there is a subdivision development agreement contract before you, while the same farm will be hit again if the Woodwick subdivision is not inspected correctly and immediately. Please consider your fellow citizens and neighboring farms when making these decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition, 7A, city events.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Our next event will be the Easter egg hunt at Buick Nature Park on April 12th at 10:00 AM. Thank you. And I'm not sure who the Easter bunny is, but I'm sure it's gonna be a fun time. Thank you.
Item 7B, recognition, Public Works Department. And I will turn this over to Commissioner Buffalini.
Thank you, Mayor. Citizens, a lot of the time, you know, people, especially up here on the board, we always say thank you, thank you, thank you to our police officers, to our Public Works, to everyone, the Parks Department, to everyone that's been doing everything that they can to help and assist with our city, especially during times of storms and snow and everything else. But this time, I'd like to do something special. Well, the board wanted to do something special for our Public Works Department, and we definitely wanted to recognize them, not just say thank you, but we wanted to give them something. Unfortunately, not all of them are with us tonight. We do have Stephen Bryson with us tonight. So, sir, if you can come up, we do want to give you guys, we made some T-shirts that are pretty cool. The front of them say Department of Public Works, and the back of them say Respect the Plow. So, we made T-shirts for all the five members that we have there. So, Mr. Bryson, we want you to hand these out to them, and hope we got their sizes correct. But this is from the Board of Commissioners and our mayor. So, thank you very much for everything that you guys have done for us. And, folks, respect the plow. And we really appreciate everything that they do. And our Public Works Director, Todd Bratcher, Blake Ayers, Ayers, did I say that right? William Atkins, Skylar Kronk-Polston, and Stephen Bryson, thank you very much, those five gentlemen. They keep this city going, and they have been working during our last storm hourlessly. I mean, they they're just been cutting down trees. So, a lot of them have been working through the night as well. So, that's why they're not here, they're home sleeping. So, I did want to thank them very much for that. And thank you, Stephen, for coming this evening. We really appreciate it and having someone here represent your crew. So, thank you very much. And your son has a lot to look forward to with such a great dad and wife ready to give birth soon also. So, congratulations on that as well. Thank you very much.
And they're they're cutting down damaged trees.
That's right.
Let's make a point that they're not out cutting down trees.
This is all from storm damaged trees.
I just thought, oh, we're gonna get, we're gonna get emails.
They're cutting down the storm damaged trees that are become a hazard. So, thank you for that, and thank you for clarifying that, Mayor.
I know. I was like, oh, we're gonna get emails, I better say something.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, city manager report, Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. I just want to kind of piggyback off that and just to remind citizens that, you know, don't cross the road when water's coming across. It's very, very dangerous. And it to the phrase they say, you know, turn around, don't drown. It's 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 it doesn't take a lot of water to take your car off. So, just just wanted to give that reminder. That was probably the heaviest rain I've seen in a while in a short amount of time in a while. I want to give a quick PD training facility update. Not a lot to report on, but what we did meet with the engineers with CEC and gave them a site tour, and they are very, very, they think it's a very good site. And they're working on fitting our footprint and plan on that site. We've been working with Hittman County, officials working, looking at the zoning of that property. As soon as we get that worked out, we will be bringing a contract for purchase to the board to consider. Give a paving update, it is underway. We're gonna hold off on a few streets, Crow Cut, Chester, and Northwest Highway until the utility work is completed. It doesn't make a lot of sense to do anything until they're they're done with that. Also, wanted to let the board know, Patty and I met with MTAAS about scheduling a strategic planning session for August or September. And so, we're gonna get some dates on that and see what works best for everybody. But we're thinking about maybe a five, maybe a three-hour session, maybe five to eight. And just a vision and try to get on the same page as far as some of our goals, some of what we want to achieve. And I would love for it to be a unifying process and something that we can be proud of and move forward. And I really don't want to look at the 2040 update until we have some some sort of strategic planning where we we're kind of on the same page on what we want. Other than that, I appreciate appreciate your time, and I will, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I do have one thing to say. Mr. Darty brought up a good point. Richard Ross puts out on NICSOL really well, I might add, if there's any issues. And during the storm, he did report the roads that were underwater. So, if you're not a member of that, look into getting those that information on your phone because it will alert you to where there, you know, so you can take alternate routes where there are issues with water crossing the roads. Item number nine, consent agenda, 9A, minutes from March 6, 2025, Board of Commissioner Work Session, B, minutes from March 6, 2025, Board of Commissioner Regular Meeting.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Abstained.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 9A and B pass four with four with one abstention. Item 10, old business, we have no old business tonight. Item 11, new business, 11A, Resolution 10-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement contract for Wynwood Park subdivision, Phase 3. City Engineer?
Good evening, Board. Yes, as the mayor stated, this is a subdivision development agreement for Wynwood Park, Phase 3. Very similar, or I'm sorry, exact document, as you've all seen before, for subdivision development agreements. Want to mention that this is consisting of 27 residential lots, lot numbers 43 through 66 and 82 through 84. And the bonds will be required to have a site reclamation bond for the amount of $233,690 and a site performance bond in the amount of $1,260,218.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any questions from the board for Curtis? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 11A passes 5-0. Item 11B, Resolution 11-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement contract for Wynwood Park subdivision, Phase 4. Mr. Broadbent?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, subdivision development agreement for Wynwood Park, Phase 4, is consisting of 15 residential lots, lot numbers 67 through 81. And the bonds required will be a site reclamation bond in the amount of $193,237 and a site performance bond in the amount of $598,234. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 11B passes 5-0. Item 11C, Resolution 13-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement contract for Woodwick Cove subdivision, Phase 1. Mr. Broadbent?
Thank you, Mayor. Woodwick Phase 1, consisting of 23 residential lots, lot numbers 1 through 23. It will require a site reclamation bond in the amount of $509,185 and then a site performance bond in the amount of $1,960,731.
Motion for approval of Resolution 13-25?
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
How many phases are there for Woodwick?
Currently, staff has construction plans approved for two phases of Woodwick. Yes, that is correct, yes.
Will that leave undeveloped property as part of this parcel?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
If Phase 1 and Phase 2 are approved, is there any other undeveloped property as part of this parcel after that's done?
No, no.
So, there will be no other phases?
Correct. As far as we know, that no property is shown as future phasing.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, sir.
In fact, all adjacent properties to Woodwick are currently located as unincorporated Williamson County property, not within the City of Fairview's purview.
Thank you very much. As was mentioned during citizens' comments, and I wanted to bring this up here, to mention this particular location, because I think it's very relevant. And I think it's relevant of the other two that we just passed. Those two are located somewhat proximal to where Woodwick is located. They're about a mile and a half away. And the main access point to Highway 96 to get to the interstate is down Northwest Highway. There are already two major subdivisions being built, with a third, which is the largest of all that we have in the Fairview slated to come up, all in this one location. Right now, the two developments that are being constructed on Northwest Highway are being built at some pretty major S-curves in the road. And there have been no road improvements done beforehand, and there's nothing that's on the schedule right now that it looks like to be done to really fix up the road. Repaving is one thing, but to make it accessible for all of the heavy equipment coming in and the additional traffic that's coming in with these houses. So, now we've got a third subdivision going in, in the very same location. Is there anything, because I wasn't on the board, I don't have all the site plans in front of me, is there anything in this development agreement that is requiring the developers to build a road so that when they are bringing all the equipment, all of the materials, they have lots of trucks, are they are they supposed to be building a road into the development so they're not parking their equipment on Northwest Highway?
Great question. As far as what is in the subdivision development agreement specifically, I would rather have our city attorney represent those answers for you. But as far as road infrastructure, I am aware that there is plans and plaits to build Belvoir Drive, which would kind of, it's hard to show without a visual, but there is road infrastructure planned to kind of eliminate that S-curve, not eliminate, but a major thoroughfare would be continuing, help me out, Ethan, on the road names, but the intersection of Northwest Highway and what is now Dice-Lampley to that southeastern end of Northwest Highway, if that makes any sense.
It makes perfect sense. I'm very familiar with this part of the city. And so, where the intersection of Dice-Lampley and Northwest Highway is currently located, they're going to go past the houses that are currently being built right there on the corner, and they're gonna straighten it out, so to speak, and go up to where the very first S-curve is, over close to where Mitch Lampley's property is located.
Correct.
Yes. That's not even remotely started right now. So, so I understand that will happen in the future, but that's also opposite side of the road from where Woodwick is going. So, Woodwick is going into into one piece of property, and then there's some county property next to it, and then there's Northwest Highway. And then there is the Belvoir subdivision being built. And so, the area of road that I'm concerned about, there are two two things. One, there's an entryway right now that would go over to where Woodwick is located on Northwest Highway, pretty close to the main entrance to Orange Shire. And then I don't see an entryway on Northwest Highway that's closer to 96, past where all the curves are, past, like closer to where Elrod and Northwest Highway connect. So, what what kind of plan, if any, is there for them to mitigate the impact on the surrounding community when they're building these developments?
Thank you, Keith. Commissioner, so this is the plan of Phase 1. Oh, there we go. It's up on the monitor now.
Thank you.
This is the plan for Phase 1. Orange Shire sits to plan east here. That S-curve that you speak of, where the Orange Shire entrance is, is located right near. They do have an entrance that will come off of this street, as we currently know, is called Northwest Highway. Once the new piece of Northwest Highway is constructed through Belvoir, Phase 2, this road becomes known as Belvoir Drive. So, they will access off of Belvoir Drive. And then they also have an access point off of Northwest Highway coming in, and that is what is shown as their construction access point is directly off of Northwest Highway. So, having, show you a couple. Get it clean. So, their construction drive and construction traffic will travel from Northwest Highway into the site, not in that S-curve. And they will function as a matter of development from that point and then down to the S-curve, kind of making the L there. And as this is called Woodwick Cove, Woodwick subdivision, today, we have been informed by the developer that this will be known once it is built as Orange Shire Phase, an additional phase to Orange Shire, platted as an additional phase to Orange Shire. So, it will be somewhat continuous with the existing development that's there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. And looking at this plan, it, I think in the upper right corner, or maybe it's a little bit further up on the diagram from there, can I see like a, just the full picture of what this will look like, please?
The full?
What I'm trying to show is what I believe is a pond. Is it a natural spring on the property?
So, this area of concern was delineated as a wetland, I believe. Was delineated as a wetland by TDEC through a hydraulic determination, HD report. And Curtis, you may be able to speak to a little bit better than I can, but so that is a protected wetland area. The developer has to protect that with a 30-foot wetland buffer around that and cannot disturb that area whatsoever.
And this is all TDEC requirements, not city requirements, but, you know, this is all through TDEC.
And what happens if they do disturb the area?
Either by municipal reporting, citizen reporting, or just an inspection from TDEC. You know, they could be issued a citation, a fine. There's lots of penalties that TDEC can assess depending on, you know, how much they're encroaching or the damage involved and whatnot.
And how is disruption defined? Would it include runoff?
I'm not a TDEC official, I don't know that right offhand. I mean, I could provide a version of it, but I'd rather that information come from TDEC. Just, I don't want to misinform anyone.
Right. My concern is that we've already heard from the citizen today, because of the way that Orange Shire is being developed, there's a massive disruption of a private property that is a farm, and there are animals that are drinking water, and the water has been polluted by a significant amount of runoff from Orange Shire right now. And everything wasn't complied with in the development of that property. And this is why this farm is is being subjected to this right now. And now, directly in the exact same corner of this farm, we have this new development getting built if we approve this agreement tonight. And there is an undisturbed pond there that's surrounded by wetland that goes into the same water sources for these animals on this family farm. And so, I'm here tonight representing the voices in our community that are saying this is really, this is a concern, and are we sure that we are we are going to have compliance with the rules? And then, what are the steps that the city is taking to make sure that this family doesn't have even more disruption and damage? And I've spoken with Mr. Greer, I would just like to know from you all, I'd like you to state your assurances, please.
Yeah, so as far as, you know, doing what's required of us as city officials, I mean, we're doing everything we can to stay on type of construction sites, but just want to make it clear that the SWIP that they get from TDEC is monitored and reviewed by TDEC. And so, if a third party, the developer or the contractor hires a third-party inspector for biweekly inspections of all EPSC measures, and therefore, you know, if anything's out of compliance, it's reported, it's in a report. And if TDEC comes by and notices it's out of compliance, they get involved and issue those things. So, that would be the, TDEC would be the one to issue penalties, citations. And of course, we are, you know, the middleman in that. We we can recommend and urge contractors and developers and, you know, request certain things to be done to, you know, to help the situation. But as far as, you know, issuing wrongdoings, that would be that'd be TDEC.
Madam Mayor, may I add to that discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, 100%, if someone's out there, the the site development plans that are approved have requirements that have been incorporated from TDEC. TDEC publishes their regulations, and they're in charge of enforcing their regulations. So, if someone's not following them, we absolutely need to get them on site and and get it remedied. So, 100% there. I did want to add some atmospherics around what the development agreement does, because I don't want to give the impression that this somehow impacts their right to make the development. They already have a vested right in the development. When the development plan is approved, there's a state statute that says they got three years to develop that property without even breaking ground. And the reason they do that, it's some constitutional underpinnings, but basically, when people invest a lot of money to do a development, you approve a plan, you can't then go and kind of take it out from under them after they've spent all that money. So, there's a state statute that says... all that money. So there's a state statute that says, even without this agreement, they can develop it according to the plan. What this agreement does is it takes and reiterates mostly what's in the plan, but just kind of puts some more structure around it, and specifies with a little more detail. But we can't impose additional requirements from what was approved in the development plan. They've already got a vested right to develop under that. I just wanted to clear that up. But yeah, absolutely 100%. If they're not complying with the development plan, and if it's something that's TDEC related, then we can absolutely request TDEC come out and make some findings. And they have, they have broad enforcement powers. They have civil penalties, they have criminal penalties, they have injunctive powers, that they can go to court, make them stop. So they have a lot of options there.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that clarity. I think that's, that's very helpful. And just reading through this, it is a contract, and they do have those requirements. And so I think it's just very helpful to reiterate that and to state just kind of the concerns, and to have our city staff also be able to state their involvement and how they've been staying on top of it. I know they've been very responsive. And I just want to state also, like, what are, so that everyone knows, what are the entry points, and what are the requirements at this point? What can we expect? And I think you did a very good job of explaining it, but I just wanted to make sure we got that on the record. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
This project, it's already been through the planning process with the Planning Department. I do think that we need to do a better job on the Planning Department, looking through all of this. Just, our Planning Commission, our Planning Board, rather, I think needs to really open these emails up. They need to open up the app that we have, and look at the drawings, not just look at it on the night of whether they're approving it or not, because I feel like some of them are uneducated to be looking at it. Maybe we can have a workshop or something. I'm just putting this out there. I'm not on the Planning Board, but I've been looking at all of the drawings that are going out there, and just raising questions in my head. Some of the questions that I have is, you know, this is going to be a facility, I mean, look at what's happening to Clement Lake. I mean, it is muddied up, and nobody has addressed that. TDEC said, nope, everything's fine with the SWIP. Apparently not. I mean, and there, is there any ramifications for that? Do you guys know of anything happening with that, with Clement Lake? All the runoff that's coming from other developments in the area? There's just mud everywhere, and it's polluting that lake. The homeowners are not able to fish in their own lake because of all, what it looks like. I don't know if you looked at it, it looks like chocolate milk. I mean, it's terrible. So I just think on the Planning Commission level, and we just have to really look in a little better. I'm not talking bad about them, I know they're all doing what they can, but we really need to dissect these things a little bit more. Just, just for water runoff, I mean, this is some other issues that we have, is just from developments, the water runoff that we're having on properties on, not Cleveland, I'm sorry, over by Jefferson's, and just water runoff that we're having on multiple properties. It's all coming from developments being developed, and yeah, they're going by some SWIP and information, but it's really not helping. It's not keeping the debris in their properties. You know, even right here, next door, you look at Bowie Park, I mean, we're getting flooded into Bowie Park, we're getting debris from their construction. I mean, they're trying to remedy it, I don't know if they can or can't. But, you know, just, we understand about this property here, that's coming up, and, you know, to our attorney's recommendation, that it's already been approved through the whole process, so there's nothing we can really do at this point. But we really need to think about going forward, looking at the ramifications of things in greater detail, so that we aren't having these conversations up here, and going through what we're going through right now. It's a shame that that lake looks the way it does.
Mayor, for me.
Absolutely.
Couple things. First, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't necessarily disagree with everything Commissioner Buffalini had to say. However, I would like to hear some specifics from you, Commissioner, if you have any insight into the plans that you reviewed that you feel the Planning Commission missed, or direction that we might be able to take. As someone who serves on the Planning Commission and puts a lot of hours into the decisions I make on it, I took a little offense to that comment, so I'm sure there's others that did too, not saying that they're not warranted for some, maybe they are. But I would love to hear specific input, instead of a general statement that a job may or may not be being done. Second thing, when I first got involved in the Planning Commission, I too had a lot of questions, I guess, on runoff and understanding how all of that works. I did not come from a background of developing anything. And maybe planning staff can help with the definition or understanding of what those protocols that are in place, what is considered runoff, what is considered acceptable runoff. At the end of the day, you're exposing raw dirt. Raw dirt here is colored, so it's naturally going to color the water, which is not, I believe, that's acceptable. It's when there's sediment with the water, that's when it becomes an issue, which I understand the concern, because when your road turns orange, you think this isn't proper, but it's just like food coloring and water, it stains things. Now, I don't say that to defend it or try to like make light of the situation. I agree. If I had a lake and it turned orange, I would be mad too. I just think we need to be careful on when we make accusations that someone's doing improper activity or illegal activity, when in fact, they are following the regulations as written by the state of Tennessee. Is that fair? Is there anything that needs to be corrected in that, or you guys can add any more information to?
That is very fair, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDonald, to answer your questions factually, and I'm not picking on any, because you have been very vocal, so has our mayor, and a couple other members on that Planning Commission, been very vocal, asking very good questions. But there are some that aren't asking questions, that are voting on things, that I feel that they should be a little more educated, you know, and myself including, included in that. When we go on to the website, and we log on, and we look at what we're in turn voting on that evening for Planning Commission, or for even, for here, it logs on of who's logged on, it logs in the time, how long you've looked at those drawings, and I can tell you right now, that at least three or four members of that board has not logged on to this specific project, ever. Now, these individuals are being compensated. I know it's not a lot, but they also offer their services and volunteered to do this job. I just feel that if they volunteer to do this, they should put the time in for the better of our city, and actually open up the drawings and look at it. If they don't understand what they're looking at, I'm sure that our Planning Department would be more than happy to assist them with that. They could reach out to me, I know how to read drawings. There are several people on that Commission that can read drawings, and I'm sure that everyone would be more than happy to help and assist and go through things, just so that they have a better idea of what's going on, and what they're voting on, not just at the time of a yea or a nay. I think it would be beneficial to all of us, to our city, to our board, to the Planning Commission, to the Board of Commissioners, to know what they're looking at. And if that's the case, then we should really, going forward, we should really adopt a better way of appointing these individuals to this board, that they have some sort of planning background. And I get that this is a volunteer thing, and we're a small city, and I can appreciate that, I really do. And I appreciate everyone that's on the board. I just wish that if they had questions about what they're looking at, that they would ask those questions, if they even opened up that, and look at it. And it's not just, not just Woodwick, it's a lot of the developments that are currently going on. And listen, I know, I get it, we all have jobs, we all have, you know, careers, families that we have to look at, and, you know, got to make dinner for husbands or wives or anything like that. But if they volunteered to do this, just like all of us up here, we put our time and effort into this, and we're doing our due diligence. I'm just hoping that the planning staff can, the Planning Commission can do the same thing. And like I said, I think they're doing a great job. I just feel that there are certain individuals that need to do a little bit more due diligence on this, and they'd be better educated to making a yea or nay vote.
Mayor, for me.
Yes.
Commissioner Buffalini, that's the piece I agree with you on 100%. If this board, and every board that serves this community, if you are on that board, you should be putting in the expected time and energy that this city deserves, and the citizens of this community deserve. No argument there, sir. I guess, just to clarify, what I was specifically asking for is the past projects that you referenced that have runoff issues, or there's been conversations of runoff issues with it. I'm just curious, when referencing the Planning Commission, if there was anything specific you felt we missed, or we could have done differently to prevent the outcome that we currently have. That was it. I would just, I totally agree with the time and energy piece, that is 100% accurate, and could not agree more. But just, was curious if you, if there was anything specific that was, that you felt the Planning Commission missed, or could have done differently to achieve a different outcome, outside of just saying no to the project in general.
Yeah, well, we can, the Planning Commission can, Planning Board can start by looking at the elevations of the plans. If they don't know about earth or anything around it, they can look at the lakes, they can look at Google Earth, and they can see, oh wait, there's a lake nearby, this might be a potential issue. We could just open it up more, you know what I'm saying? That, it's just an educated education that we can have. Maybe we can have a workshop for them with our planning, with our Planning Department. I think it's been done once before, I'm not exactly sure. It could just be, just looking at things, rather than waiting until it's in front of you on a piece of paper, like I said, for voting yea or nay. I know it's very difficult to find the volunteers, and to be fully involved. But if you're not going to be fully involved, don't volunteer.
And I respect everything you've had to say. I want to just point that out.
Just wanted, I just wanted to note a couple things, sorry.
Let me, let me say something real quick. How many times have I opened IDT?
I'm not sure how many times you've opened it, but you look at mine often in my office.
IDT is a very, I'm so excited that we're gonna have a new program, because IDT is very, it's not user-friendly at all. And I'm not meaning that people shouldn't look and, you know, check out things, but I know for me, Ethan and I go over projects weekly. And we do them the way I did them when I was working in the architecture engineering field. We lay out drawings, or I print things, and he, or he brings it up on his computer, and we go through issues and talk about it. So I do it a little bit differently. I don't know what the other members of the board do. They might, you know, print out drawings, or, you know, whatever serves their purpose. I'm a very visual person, I like to have things in front of me and, and, you know, make notes. And so I spend time with Ethan and Curtis quite a bit, weekly, on different projects, to make sure that I understand what's going on with the projects. But you probably would see that, if you look it up, I've not, IDT is not a user-friendly program to me. So I do it the old-school way. I just print out the projects, and I mark on them and look at them that way. So I just, you know, I think, I get what you're saying, and I agree with it, but I just do it a little different way. And I do it the way I did when I was, you know, working in that field, but.
And I said, I was like you, there was a bunch of people, you included,
That's right.
that actually know what you're talking about, because you're looking at the plans, the drawings. But there, like I said, there are several people where I haven't seen any log-ons on this, and they're not getting it, they're not printing it, because if they printed it, they'd be opening up IDT. IDT is not the most user-friendly, and like you said,
We're changing.
we are changing that, thank the Lord. But it's not that terrible to use either. I'm just hoping that, you know, maybe we should make it mandatory, where even us, the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission members attend the training, or classes, or workshop for this.
Probably after, I think we're gonna have that right. After we get our new program, we're gonna have something like that. I think it probably wouldn't be a good idea to do that with IDT, since it's going away, and we're gonna have the new program. I think, you know, maybe a workshop where the Planning Commission and the board gets together, and just a, you know, kind of a session where we can do an overview.
That's correct. Mayor, at the end of our implementation stage, where we get everything set up, then we have a training for Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners that will be publicly available to any citizens who want to learn how to use the system as well.
And I also wanted to point out, before, I think you had something you wanted to say. Mr. Greer and I have gone through videos, and I think our planning staff monitors, because, you know, the citizens are very concerned about Bowie Park. But we have gone through video, and the video that we saw, the water runoff that's going into the park, correct me if I'm wrong, the videos that we watched, the water's clear, and it's not muddy or has silt in it. Just with that, we've got to understand that, you know, not all runoff is bad, because we've got five lakes in that park, and we've got streams. And if we just barricade the whole park against runoff, those lakes will be critically low, the streams that feed those lakes will be low. So I think we need to kind of differentiate between bad runoff and runoff that actually is healthy for the park. So I think sometimes when people send in videos, like the one that we looked at together, Ethan, the water was like perfectly clear, because it was good runoff coming into the park, to help the park, not to hurt the park. And then I've got a huge creek behind my house, and when there's a storm or rain that, you know, falls quickly, like the storm we just had, my creek for two days is solid brown. And then, and then it goes back to clear again. It's just, you know, that's, that's the way it works. But if the runoff is, you know, silt or chemical, not the red clay that we have here, that everybody knows, you know, that's just Fairview. Our, you know, we have red clay out here. So a lot of times, when people see the water run over the red clay, and it might be discolored, it's not because it's a chemical or dirty, it's just because that's what we have out here, is red clay. So I just wanted to, you know, just put that out there, that not all runoff is bad. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini? Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Item 11C passes 5-0. Item 11D, Resolution 14-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement contract for Woodwick Cove subdivision Phase Two. Mr. Broadbent?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a subdivision development agreement for Woodwick Phase Two. It is consisted of eight residential lots, lot numbers 201 to 208, and it will require a site reclamation bond in the amount of $229,605, and as well as a site performance bond in the amount of $655,548.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions of the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11D passes 5-0.
Item 11E, Resolution 15-25, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, designating certain items as surplus and authorizing their disposal. And this would be be, uh, for the police department and, uh, Mr. Darty will speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Um, the, the police department has wanted a surplus of, uh, five Ford Explorers, uh, I believe or not, were bought one my first year here at the city back, uh, back in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, and then, um, uh, two LISO items. Uh, the, the, what this designation will do is put, allow them to put this on gov deals and then the proceeds of those sales will go, uh, into the, uh, uh, general fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
I would like to say, as I've said before, the LISO items, I want to thank our police department, um, for the diligence they do to find these surplus items, the LISO items that either can be, um, retained by our community or sold and the money go to the general fund, um, to be used other, other ways. Um, we have, over the years, had millions of dollars worth of LISO items that our police department have acquired for this community and I do appreciate their hard work and diligence in doing that. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item eleven E passes five zero.
Item twelve, roundtable, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Buffalini.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if, if you guys walked back on the workshop, um, the paving product, projects are picking up again. Uh, it's springtime, first day of spring. Yay, we made it. Um, hope it doesn't snow anytime soon, but, um, the pavings are, are, are getting going again. And I had an item on our agenda earlier, um, e- emails from our citizens that I just wanted to address, address briefly is keep the emails coming. We read them. We're, we're, we're helping. We're doing whatever we can as a board, um, and as a city. We're doing whatever we can to assist everybody. Uh, I know we've gotten two major emails and, uh, I know our, our, um, Curtis, our engineer is on top of it and Ethan, our planning department. You guys have been doing great, honestly, and we thank you for helping rectify a couple situations with some water runoff on the streets down to people's driveways and backyards. So we're, we're, they're doing the best that we can, uh, the city and, and, and our staff. Um, the police facility, training facility, uh, we're, we're feeling very positive about this and, you know, I want to thank our, our city for, for helping out with everything and just the board for just doing our due diligence and, and making sure that we can help in any way that we can. Um, that's really all I have to say for this evening. I'm gonna keep it brief. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, first, I want to thank our first responders. Um, at church on Sunday morning, there was a medical emergency and, um, I was amazed at how quickly there was, uh, a response with an ambulance there. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you so, so much. It was very impressive to see it firsthand, um, and to just let y'all know how much we just truly appreciate how quickly everybody responded. And, um, so I wanted to say thank you for that and give you that recognition. Um, I'm very glad to know that the strategy meeting is going to come up with MTS at the end of the summer. I'll be getting ready for that. So thank you, Mr. Darty and, um, Ms. Patty for coordinating that. Um, with the, the, the runoff from the developments, you know, I was thinking about this the other day. I was out for a run and I was looking at a bunch of, of clear cut and I was just thinking, this is hard, right? This is really hard to be going through the changes and change is always hard. We're experiencing a change of seasons right now and it's hard when the cold weather and the hot weather meet. Um, and we may not all want all of the development that's going to eventually be here, but one of the silver linings that I think about is all of the great new neighbors we'll have. Um, so many of us are somewhat recent transplants. I get told all the time that where my house sits used to be a chicken farm and there are people who fondly remember that, but I hope that they wouldn't wish me away. So someday, well, some people might, but someday we're going to, um, to have some really great new neighbors and some beautiful homes that will eventually look like they have been there for a long time. And so I know that there are all these growing pains. I hope that we can help to mitigate them and to fix things. Hopefully we can fix them before people have to call in. So with T-Deck going to these sites and our wonderful, um, city planner and his team working diligently, um, to, to maintain and, and, and the citizens that are out there looking, I hope that we can stay on top of these things, but we won't always be growing in the same way. And, um, our city is going to be a beautiful place to live, both now and as we continue, uh, with all of the growth that we're experiencing. Um, I also just wanted, um, to mention something fun. So if you don't have anything to do next weekend, Tuck Everlasting will be at the high school. It's going to be a great musical to go see and the spring sports are in full swing. It is beautiful outside. Um, softball and baseball Friday nights are about to come back. So I just wanted to do a little pitch for our youth sports in, um, rec, middle school and high school and to say that there's going to be a great musical at the high school next weekend if y'all wanted to go catch that.
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to thank all of the, the police department, Public Works have done a fantastic job in the last few months, um, with the winter being the way it is. And, um, thanking the, uh, the staff completely, the planning staff, the park staff and the administration staff. Uh, want to piggyback just a look, piggyback just a little bit on Commissioner Buffalini had to say about the, um, uh, paving that's getting started. Uh, a friend of mine that lives on Old Nashville, uh, highway, uh, called me the other day and wanted to thank the city for everything that they're doing. He said, you wouldn't believe the difference in the, the opinion of everybody on his neighborhood, that they're finally seeing some, some benefits from their tax dollars and they're so very thankful and appreciative of the paving that's being done. Uh, that was very thoughtful of this gentleman and he's been a friend for many years and, uh, I'm sure that they're looking forward to having this done and it's, as well as a lot of other neighborhoods. Uh, we just wish that we could do them all and make them all look, look good and, and ride good at the same time, but unfortunately we can't do it. But anyway, uh, that's about all I have to say tonight. And thanks everyone for here, for coming tonight. Thanks.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just another tip of the cap to the Public Works guys. They've been working overtime with all the storms. It's nice to get them a little recognition. I'm sure they all have their, their reasons for this evening's, uh, I guess, overlap in, in con- conflicting, uh, scheduling that they may have had, but uh, I do appreciate the fact that Commissioner Buffalini that, and, uh, others that called that out, they deserve it. Um, the other thing too, yeah, it's youth sports firing up. It's springtime here in Fairview officially and which means the next generation of this beautiful town is out running around in the streets and riding on their bikes and chasing balls and all that. So, um, pay attention out there. Keep that in mind. As the weather gets warmer, more kids are outside. I've noticed in my neighborhood, in the winter months, you kind of, I guess, let it go when you see a car flying by when it's twenty-five degrees outside, but when it's sixty and your kids are running around the yard, it hits a little different. So just keep an eye out for them, uh, for kids in general around the community. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. I want to thank our, um, Public Works as well. They did a great job, uh, during this last storm. We've had several this winter and, um, Richard staying on top of Nixal and getting out information. Um, I know that I read about three roads that were, um, flooded and it just helps us not to get stuck if we're heading that direction and don't cross wa- water that's, um, in the road. If it, you know, if he puts it out there, it is hazardous and you don't want to be in a situation where your car, um, gets stuck in that. It's very dangerous. Um, thank you to, um, uh, Todd Bradshawd and, and, um, our city manager, Mr. Darty, for all your efforts in, um, something that has been a hot topic over the past months with the, uh, gun range and training facility and finding an alternate location and us working towards, um, making that happen. I, I appreciate everyone's hard work in, you know, the thirty days that we had to look for an alternate location. And I think it looks to me, I mean, it's not final yet, but it looks to me like, uh, you know, this could really work for our community. Um, thank you, Mr. Hogan, for sitting in for, uh, Mr. Carter tonight. I know that he's, uh, on vacation with his girls and I hope he's having a great time. And, um, thank you to, um, our planning staff and, and Rachel for, you know, making sure that we have everything we need to make, um, great decisions. Thank you to the board for, um, just making sure our community is taken care of. And we appreciate everyone who's here tonight. We love it when you come, come and join us and also those at home for watching and, you know, if you have anything, just, um, we have open door here. So just reach out to us, reach out to our city manager, our planning staff, and I know that they are all willing to take care of this community and answer questions. So like I always say, um, let's please keep our community beautiful and please pick up trash and don't throw it out. And the recycle center does not take mattresses, but Pine Wood Road does for twenty bucks. So please don't leave them on the streets out here. Um, there is a place to take them. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.